This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Welcome to the March 20th, 2024 Southampton Planning Board meeting. And members present tonight are Dan LaValle, Mark Donald, Paul Fergala, myself, Paul Beaman. And we have our board consultant, Richard Harris, with us this evening as well. We do have a joint meeting with the Housing Authority this evening, which we will open in about 15 minutes or so, but we have an A and R that we have to address first. But before I even start that, I want to welcome our new town administrator, who some, I guess, have met, I did out in the parking lot a couple of weeks ago, but I'd like to welcome, is it Scott, is it Zizabak?
Zabak.
Zabak, as the new town administrator. And if you want to come up and say a few words to the board, be our guest.
Hello, sir.
On the spot.
Put you right on the spot early.
Thanks for the introduction. Obviously, I know a couple of the board members already, but you know, there's a lot of work ahead of the planning board, both tonight and in the future. So there's a lot of things coming down the road, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome to Southampton. So tonight, we have the first agenda item is from James and Eugene Labrie. It's an A and R for 117 to 125 College Highway. And here to represent the applicant is Jim Labrie himself. The plans are drawn up by Heritage Surveys and Engineering. So if, Jim, you would bring us the plans and then get to the podium and explain.
Most important thing.
Oh, yeah.
One minute. One minute. Thank you. There's a few copies there. And then here are the drawings and the mylar.
All right. So let me just spread these out for the guys and then we can go over the podium. Speak your piece.
Okay, I'm Jim Labrie, Gun Road, and here representing Zero College Highway. It's the parcel. Any questions?
Board members, any questions at all?
Like you said, I think this is pretty simple. Nothing really questioned unless there's just some typos we noticed, but how's that?
I'll pass that on to Mark.
Yeah, yeah.
No, this is exactly what the Public State Building Committee was looking for, so.
Yeah, that's what they were looking for. Now, this identifies it so we can at least investigate going forward.
That looks good.
Any other questions? Richard, any comments from you?
No.
I think Stephen's looking over. Paul Fergal, did you have anything? Your last one up, buddy.
Hearing done.
Oh, no, no, I'm fine.
Oh, you're good?
Yep.
If there are no other questions or concerns, do I have a motion?
I move that we endorse the Form A plan as presented.
Motion made by Mark.
For which property?
The Zero College Highway.
Parcel A.
Parcel A.
Which we will assign an address to after we approve the A and R.
Did anyone second that? Second?
So Mark made the motion. Dan, you going to second?
Yep.
Any other further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, now, what was the consideration for the address? The abutting property is 127, and I saw an email from Mark Reed that suggested 125. Are you?
Yeah, I think, let me just double check that.
You good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with any number. That makes sense.
Because 127, 129 go toward, go toward the south, or the west, as it were. So it would be either 125 or something jumping.
Yeah, it's directly after, it used to be the Strawberry Manor. I don't know what the new name of that, or the name, current name of the, I think there's six homes in that one building across from Cumberland Farms. We're right, we're the next lot. That's where the slot is. So whatever that one is, it makes sense to go to the next one.
So just hypothetically, like, the other scope of that is the property encompasses 117 to 125. So if the rest of the property is developed, we want to leave enough room in there, correct, for future development? So is that 125 going to interfere with that in your mind?
I don't think so, because.
Because you've got 115, so you'd have 117, 119, 120, 123, so you'd have four other.
Yeah, in between.
Right.
So 125, it's perfect with that. I think it's the next one.
24, 23, 22, 21, 20. All right, so we will assign number 125 for that parcel. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to assign 125 College Highway to that new parcel A.
Motion made by Paul. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, James, you're.
I am just going to, how many copies are total here? So I've got one.
They had six, because we're going to pass one to the.
Because I need, I need four, so I'm.
I'll give you one. You will keep my money, yeah?
And it's already been surveyed, so it's all pinned out there, so when people walk out there, they have a clue what's going on.
Stuff. Those are not pins to be set, those are set.
What was that?
Those are not, those are not pins to be set, those are already set.
They just did yesterday.
Oh, great.
When they drew this up, they had it.
You need two papers, Jim, or just one?
Well, one is going to go to Scott, so, and then I'll take the other ones. Did we ever, did you ever pass the law where one person signs the plans, or is it still? Oh, you have that finally? Great.
He's the boss.
Came after you left the board.
I know. We used to sign everything. I do miss it, being on the board, but.
See, I mean, you hang around.
But what I don't miss, what I don't miss, like, in five minutes, I'm walking out the door.
You want the under.
What was that?
Here you go, Jim.
These two there, custom mylar.
Paper airplane?
Yeah, pretty close.
It's good.
I need one for cons, one for assessors.
Oh, you say, I got to hear that, right?
One for building, and I need one, so I need floors of his own.
Well, I only need.
Yeah, probably. I mean, maybe like half an hour.
Those red trees.
All right, thank you, Jim.
My suggestion would be to have.
The Wheeler one next, the person who obviously has to take them out of borders, we have to take them out of borders.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Good luck. I've been asked to take building permits out of, out of the order of the agenda here tonight, and this was something that came up recently, and I kind of don't know how to handle it, to be quite honest with you, but.
Paul?
Just a minute.
Would you please speak up?
Hello?
This is the game they play.
People at my event have a hard time here.
If they made these a little taller, it might help too. So anyway, we have building permits, and the one we're going to address right now is for 16 East Street, Anthony Wheeler. And all the sign-offs were made on this, including myself, because it was under the 35,000 or 40,000 threshold for stormwater. And days later, after it was all signed and sent off, I get an email regarding a question about trees on East Street that is a scenic highway that were taken down. And I haven't a clue as to what took place. I emailed the building inspector, who is also the tree warden, and I asked him if he was aware of that, and evidently, he was not at the time. So I haven't any idea, but I'm going to defer to Dan, because he brought it to my attention. So you have the floor.
So if we look back to our town records, from about the 1970s on, we passed scenic roads in our town. So there's a number of parts of our roads that we've identified as scenic, which is a Massachusetts general law, where those are, those for removal of trees, walls, and other things are identified in our bylaws, they have to be approved by the, by the planning board. This property, which is 16 East Street, is on a portion of East Street, which is part of a scenic road. Obviously, anybody driving by would see that many trees have been cleared from the, from the roadway, without, from my knowledge, any approval from the planning board. So we have a situation where, well, you can't put a tree back up when you cut it down. So I'm asking the town, what is our, what is our path forward? And if we approved, did the town, I think the question really is, did the town approve this? If not, we need to go back to the builder and be like, you didn't get approval for this, and we need to address it.
Every attorney is on their phone.
Apparently, I forgot my phone.
Really? Can you elaborate on how many trees roughly, and diameter roughly? Are we talking about a brushy hedge trial? Are we talking mature trees?
Mature trees in, in the central part of the town, East Street, where I believe the part, the character is the historical aspect of the town, and those trees.
In the historic district, as well as scenic road?
I don't think we have a historic district.
Okay.
There is a sign.
There is a historic district. Okay.
Yep.
News to me, thank you. So we have a historic district, and it's on the scenic road. And I would say the character has been compromised of that area without approval of the town, so.
Before we go any further, could I have someone from the Wheelers get up and address the situation, please, if you could? And what, and what you were aware of, and what you were not aware of?
So I am the abutter, and I live at 22 East Street. My name is Aaron Dufresne. I did not know that any of that work was going to be done. I don't know if I need to know as an abutter. I'm guessing, no. However, the trees that were taken down were a bit of a surprise to me, one of them being an older, probably 85-year-old sugar maple. And they provided a bit of privacy between me and that, and it was right along the line. So I just never had any expectation that if you were going to build on that lot, you would want to take down the privacy between the two lots. I was wondering what was happening at the lot after that got taken down, and I had emailed Dan as a friend and said, hey, I can't find any setback laws about fences. Now that work's happening, I want to put up a snow fence, basically, to keep my pets from going into an active construction area, because it's about to start. So he got back to me, and I sent him a picture of what I had had so far for a snow fence. And he said, wait a second, where is that? And then he said, I don't believe that there are any setbacks for a temporary fence, like a snow fence. So that's why we're at this juncture. I apologize for not having a voice.
Now, are these, are these in the town's right-of-way, or are they back on the private property?
I would assume they are part of the property, because the owner of the property cut them down. They're very close to the roadway.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Richard, one question. Does the town have a scenic road bylaw?
Yes.
You do have, what does it provide? Or have you, the question I ask is actual bylaw or simply designation?
Does it designate them and just reference the state, is your question?
Yeah, because some communities have adopted a local scenic road bylaw that has more regulatory authority than the state law.
No, we reference the state in our.
Okay. The reason I ask is, when you look at the state law.
Yep.
After a road has been designated as a scenic road, any repair, maintenance, reconstruction, or paving work done with respect thereto. So with respect to the road, shall not involve or include cutting or removal of trees. So if you're not doing work in the road.
Well, that doesn't make sense, because the way we've applied this law in the past.
That's the reason some communities have a local bylaw that adds to this.
So we can go back and look at the bylaws, and I think that's the first step, right? It sounds like, let's get that.
First is, did you adopt a local bylaw that put forth more regulation than, like, this state law? And the state law goes on to say that you may adopt local bylaws that have enforcement, et cetera. And I say that because a lot of people think, well, if it's a scenic road, you can't do anything along the road. No, yet, as long as not doing anything to the road. Now, the other question comes up is, were any of these public shade trees?
I mean, they're pretty large, so yes.
If they're public shade trees, they would have required approval by the tree warden, if you have a tree warden, before.
I think the, maybe the effort the town can put forward is having you review the town's bylaws and the situation, and providing guidance as to how we move forward.
And the other aspect to it is, if you do have a tree warden, and it's a public shade tree.
Yep.
The removal of the trees, if this activity is subject to the law, requires a joint hearing by the tree warden and the planning board. So the question comes up is, do you have a local bylaw?
Yep.
And was the work done?
I'm looking.
To alter, as they say, repair, maintain, reconstruct, or pave the road. Generally, the, it comes in where they are putting a driveway into it. That is generally accepted as being worked down in the road, because you're connecting to the road. Or there's a utility line associated with it, that's.
So there is no road, driveway, so they would have to.
Road, you mean right-of-way. And secondly, can you define public shade tree just for everybody's? There's a definition, state law, I don't have it in front of me, I didn't. But that applies that the tree's on public way? It's within certain distance of the, of the road. It can't, there's, yeah. I always let tree wardens define those, because I've never understood their, some have different opinions as to what is required and not. Right, so if it's, the tree's 30 feet back from the right-of-way, then it's not a public shade tree.
Well, we know this is not true.
It can be designated. Got to talk to your tree warden. But any trees within the right-of-way, if you're doing work within altering the roadway, then they are subject to it. And that is generally considered utility work, driveway connections. Some communities do take the position that anything right-of-way is subject to it. That's a matter of how you want to interpret it, but it's best if you have a local bylaw that makes it clear.
So as part of this effort, they're, they'd have to put in a driveway for their home, right? So.
The driveway intersection clarity would have been, if the altered trees for that should have had some, very likely should have had a hearing with the tree warden.
Again, I go back to, I think the next step for the town is to have you investigate in comparison to our bylaws, the activities that have occurred, and report back as to what should, what, what is the appropriate path forward in this situation. The damage has been done. You're not going to put the trees back, so.
Use of mitigation.
Richard? Just for your edification, I followed up on that with the tree warden, the building inspector. And he also consulted with Randall Kemp, because he had to issue the curb cut permit.
Yep.
And quite frankly, I was surprised that I was asked, is it in fact, East Street a scenic highway? So the warden wasn't even aware of it.
Yeah.
So my next question was, have you got anything on your building permit, when someone is building a house, if that house is on a scenic roadway? So there's some criteria that they have to follow or be aware of, if they're building on a scenic highway? And there is, there is none on this building permit application per se. So looks like this is going to get the ball rolling on, on some regulations that need to follow through right from the building permit on.
Sounds like we need to process improvements, education and training for some of the towns' people. Right now, this seems like the towns, there's some, at least from what I'm hearing, it sounds like the town may, we need to investigate that the town approved this? And if so, we, or not, did the builders move ahead without the permission? Right?
Through the chair. My colleague, factual question.
Yeah.
Have you found boundaries setting out the right-of-way for the roadway as compared to the private property, and determined whether these trees were, as subject to our conversation here, within the public right-of-way or nearly adjacent and affecting the scenic condition?
Right, so it sounds like we get back to when we're approving properties that are on scenic roads.
Wait, wait, wait.
This is not, this is not my job. This is the building inspectors, or someone in our, in the planning board who approved it, Scott.
It was a factual question. It's, it's not a question, I'm not asserting that you should have.
I don't go out and inspect properties.
So to the chair, A and R consultant votes, when you're ready. Sorry to interrupt. May I?
Go ahead.
I agree with my colleague that we need an opinion about what the town bylaws, regulations say or don't say about this, and in particular, what approvals may have been given. Pause it, none. No, no, never mind. Regardless, don't we need some field investigation to determine which side of the line these trees are on? And how big they are, and how many they are, so we can feed that into regulatory and legal analysis? I would volunteer for that, along with any other qualified professional or tree warden, I would expect. But, I mean, are they in the right-of-way, or are they not in the right-of-way? And how big a deal is this? I don't know. But thank you for bringing it to our attention, no doubt.
Right, you want to read that?
I believe it's our responsibility as the planning board to.
Thank you, Paul.
Uphold the.
Paul has the.
The Pauls are going to weigh in.
So I've been through this painfully, through, with, on state projects, so I can.
I hope so.
So I can, so I can read the definition of what a public shade tree is. All trees within the public way are defined as public shade trees.
Or on the boundaries thereof. Yep, there are trees planted in accordance with the provision of Section 7.
Yeah. So it then says, the tree warden is responsible for the care, control, protection, and maintenance of all public shade trees, except those within state highway, and shall enforce all provisions of law for the preservation of such trees.
By the, have a town bylaw, correct? Or do they have to follow mass law?
Yeah, it says, within the right-of-way or on the boundaries thereof, is, I'm not sure what they meant by on the boundaries, it's.
Well, I think that goes back to the state law on, correct me if I'm wrong, it's near state law, if you have a tree that's partly on one parcel and then part of it's on the other. By law, if there's a branch that's.
Right.
Spanning over the property line, that property line can dictate as the boundary that, that owner can cut. So the tree is on the boundary, but stands in, it's still a public shade tree. But yeah, and I assume East Street is not a state road?
No.
Well, it looks like there's got to be some homework done here with town bylaws. Go ahead.
I just want to make one more point, that it sounds, from what you said, that Randall approved a curb cut. There is, where this lot is, there are three basically telephone poles, and the middle one is right in the middle of this, where the curb, where the roadway is. That has a street light on it. I don't know if he's going to ask for moving that with the power company. I do know that the owner of the land currently has an excavator on it, that I believe will be used to clear up the stumps. Like, it arrived today. So if there's homework to be done in case of mitigation afterwards, it needs to happen, like, ASAP tomorrow, because I believe that's what that excavator is there for, is to pull the stumps.
Have you got pictures of all the stumps?
I, I don't have pictures of all of them. I have the, I have pictures of my side.
I'll.
I have a 9:00 AM appointment with Randall, and I would totally give up our agenda to do the site, but.
Yeah, and also, I was going to send, Ron, Ron told me he was going to go over and visit the site, because he was unaware of it. So I'm going to ask him to get over there tomorrow to take some pictures, seeing as he's a tree warden, and then we can start the process of, through his office, I might suggest, of what the local bylaw reads, if there's any, and then go forward and find out what the recourse is going to be in the action. I'm assuming, since we can't replicate what's there, there's going to be trees to be planted at some point, but I'm not going to get into that, because that's legal stuff that I'm not involved in, because the damage has already been done, but we'll, we'll research this.
Thank you for taking this in your consideration. I appreciate it, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being vigilant.
Yes, indeed.
Also note that it appears from reading the statute that if the trees are being cut, then the tree warden is not involved in the public hearing, because it says if there are trees proposed to be cut. So this is, and that, we got into that in another community, and, yeah, it was advised that if it's already cut, then tree warden doesn't have to row in it. Thought that's interesting.
Okay. Sorry for the wait, but now I'm going to introduce Sierra Simmons.
Oh, yeah. It's pretty obvious.
Can you bring your board right up to the table there?
You want to?
If they don't want to get up there, but I would ask you to, I would ask you to officially open.
To the inquisition.
Yeah, I project pretty well, because it's hard, it's super hard, isn't it? I'm a loud talker.
For the public's knowledge, this is a joint meeting tonight with the Housing Authority to discuss. to discuss some options about forty R and some other issues regarding housing. And Ciara is here tonight, and I would ask her to officially open her housing meeting and then introduce her board members. Looks like you have a quorum.
All right. I do, okay. Hi, I'm Ciara Simmons, Chair of the Housing Authority. I'm calling the Housing Authority meeting to order. First, we always have open time for the public. I don't see any members of the public. You guys are all not here with members of the public, so let's move on. So we have all of our members here today. We have the wonderful Dan LaValle, who's here today, sans beard, which is Beardless Dan, which is different than Beard Dan, he has totally different opinions. Joy Piper and Janet Kane, you guys are probably all familiar, thanks for being here. And so I was hoping to start by bringing us all onto the same page and sort of going through the background of why I wanted to have this joint meeting. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so in the master plan and in our housing production plan, which was just updated a couple of years ago, establishing a forty R district, which is a mixed youths, mixed use smart growth district in the town, was identified as a strategy to increase affordable housing in Southampton, which is of course the housing authority's goal. And so the way forty R district works is you got a designation with the state, and then you get some extra state subsidies, you get like some bonus funds from the state for it. It encourages, it's an overlay district, so it encourages building of both like market rate housing units, commercial, it's usually in a commercial area and it's overlaid over the commercial area so that housing can be built there. But the whole idea is that you create sort of a maybe walkable sort of community center area where there's housing, market rate housing, affordable housing, businesses, et cetera, and it just creates a little sort of cluster, a good kind of cluster. So it seemed like a viable option for us. We talked to the Mass Housing Partnership, we talked to the Western Mass Housing Coalition, and they all feel it's a great way forward. So looking into it, we learned from Paul that there had actually been a study done in 2012 with PVPC and the planning board, back when John Furman was the planning board person. And they completed an application for a forty R district and, but it never got submitted. The last thing that happened was there was a next steps, next steps document created, which included things like planning board review, final draft, bylaw and design standards, PVPC, submit final draft, present to the select board, legal review, it goes to the state, DHCD does a review, and then planning board holds a public hearing. So it was basically this application, the study and the application was put together, but these next steps of like getting it through to the state never happened. And from what I've heard, the reason that didn't happen was because there was not enough infrastructure and there was, I think there was just a lot of other things going on, and this was deprioritized because it didn't seem like it was going to make a big difference because there wasn't a lot of infrastructure anywhere, anyway, especially sewer specifically. So the reason I wanted to bring this back up is because, A, I don't think it hurts to have a forty R district. I think it's maybe a little work, it doesn't cost us any money, if anything, it gets us a little bit of money.
Could you expand on that? Because you really caught my attention that we adopt a forty R overlay and we get state money.
Yes.
We'd like more detail.
So it's not a whole lot of state money. It's not like so much state money that is groundbreaking. If it was, this probably would have gone through, but it's a little bit of state money.
Is that straightforward cherry sheet money or is it access to grants?
No, it's straightforward, like they send us a little stipend type thing.
Okay.
But.
Well, go ahead, Richard has some.
I have a note, in South Hadley, we developed two forty R districts. Larry Smith probably worked on yours, he did, worked on ours as well. And the amount of money you get depends upon what are the number of units that you could theoretically develop. The process is you identify area that meets the criteria, you meet with DHCD, they do a preliminary evaluation of it, you go, you then develop the forty R proposal, hold a public hearing, then get submitted to the state, they give you preliminary approval, you then go back and go through the zoning process to, to formally create the district. Once you have that achieved, then you spend application for the incentive funds. The incentive funds are based upon how many units you can create. South Hadley, we got three hundred fifty thousand orders for each one, each district. That's because we had like four hundred units in theory could be developed, reality, no way you could have done those, but that's how the math comes out. One of the things they ask you in the very beginning is, do you have the infrastructure?
I wanted to know which is the chicken, which is the egg?
The infrastructure is going to have to be there, or you're going to have to have, I would be highly skeptical that DHCD or now is housing, they changed names up there.
HLC.
HLC. I'd be highly skeptical that they would approve a forty R district without the infrastructure commitment to be there. Because you, you have to, you have to submit an annual report once you have one created. And if you haven't had any housing developed in two or three years, they start talking about taking the money back that they gave you. South Hadley hasn't had any money taken back yet. Fortunately, the housing development that we approved just got their tax credits and they're going to break ground in one of them this fall. But there's also another incentive if you do have one created and approved and get an actual project developed. That is, they give you potentially additional money for each unit that you actually CO.
Right.
And, and that money is, well, the first pot of money we got was used for any purpose we wanted to. The second pot, they did have the capital fund, but they told us the state has a very broad definition of what is capital, so we used it for engineering and property acquisition.
Can I ask a broad definition question? Infrastructure, we've used it as a euphemism for sewer. I wonder, since South Hadley has public water, sewer and transit and other things that I couldn't even enumerate, what do you mean by infrastructure?
That's largely it, water, sewer, drainage, electric utilities, et cetera, available. And.
Transit?
Transit has to be available for the area. It has to be, I think it's within one quarter mile of a bus stop.
We don't have that.
Well, if we were to do the district that was proposed in 2012, you could get two amenities, it's like right next to the big Y and all of the, like you can get two amenities pretty easily on foot. I don't know if that would matter to them.
It would.
That was.
It would, there's a fundamental criteria upfront that they look at is transit access and what proximity. South Hadley, we had, Larry and I had plans for four forty R districts in South Hadley. One of them was going to be a real challenge politically, but the other one, the fourth one would have been a slam dunk politically. But PVTA eliminated the bus route on that.
So is that a nonstarter? If you don't have a bus stop, that's like a straight nonstarter?
Yeah.
Interesting, okay, well, that's what it takes at.
There can be exceptions, but it's, you got to really have, it's really tough to.
You can get plus points for walk to and bike share and bike.
And there's, I will tell you, there's a, there's a couple of other, other benefits to forty R district. If you have a viable forty R district that's actually developing, it can be used as a safe harbor against a forty B application. Additionally, when you apply for other grants, like Mass Works, is there, do you have a forty R district, do you have this, do you have that? But yes.
That's something that I also wanted to bring up, was the Mass Works infrastructure grant. And that seemed like a chicken or egg situation with this, because it seemed like if we had a forty R district, they'd be psyched, they really want to see that the community is like well on its way to creating the infrastructure and committed before they give you the grant, right? But if we don't get that grant, we maybe couldn't get the forty R district. So perhaps the first step is to just indicate commitment in other ways and work toward that grant, and maybe that grant could go toward sewer, maybe that's the first step. I don't know what we're going to do about transportation, I don't know if that's ever going to be a thing.
If, if the board is inclined to want to pursue this, I'd be happy to give Bill a call off the state and say, this is a situation we have.
Yeah.
No, what would be, what would be the options of how the town could pursue it if they wanted to?
That would be awesome.
To build off the chicken or the egg scenario, it gets even more complicated, because Mass Works, you typically need an anchor that's committed financially to establish a development. If you don't have that anchor.
Like a for-profit developer type thing?
Correct, you can just throw your application away.
Interesting.
And just touching on that.
It further complicates the equation.
Touching on that, when South Hadley got their last Mass Works project, it was my last big grant with them, it was 2.8 million, I was thrilled with that. One of the reasons for it was Rocky's Hardware was going to develop a new facility and Wayfinders was going to develop a sixty unit apartment building. And my understanding from my successors, she's been getting inquiries from the state, well, no, we gave you this three hundred fifty thousand orders and you said you're going to have, we gave you this Mass Works money, 2.8 million, the state gave you three hundred fifty for this housing, where's the housing that hasn't happened yet? And so finally, she said for this year that they finally got the tax credits because they had an issue with getting the gap financing that they needed.
Do you find that in the current marketplace, it's three to four years out from a commitment from a partner to when they're actually funded and ready to break ground?
It can be, three to four years is fast track.
Right.
It's, it, yeah, it, it takes quite a while, and the problem is.
That's what I find with the community builders in East Hampton, exactly with a tangible project, current market, four years.
Yeah, and I think that, that three to four years, three years is very optimistic. I think four years is, okay, five years is realistic. And folks at South Hadley kept asking, where's the housing? You said you're going to develop the, it takes time.
Right.
The days that there's a huge pot of money in federal government that they gave to develop housing, those are long gone. Now it's a tax credit type thing, and you have to compete for those. You usually don't get the full tax credit the first application. It takes, most places, two application rounds, and sometimes you find out there's a gap remaining, and then you got to try to find a way to fill that gap.
That's why you need the nonprofit builder and not something that municipality tries to do.
Right.
On its own.
And nonprofits that are work at it have a lot of expertise in how to make, convert, how to monetize the tax credits.
And we did talk to Wayfinders about that district, we went, had a site visit in the area, and, well, what they said, bring back that chicken and egg, which I can't believe it's still a thing that we have to talk about, but they were like, well, we want there to be a forty R district here before we were going to build here. If you recall, Janet, I was like, would you guys ever express interest and then help us work toward getting that district? And they were like, well, we've never done that before.
Not formally.
Not formally, I'm sure that, I mean, they are leading the Western Mass Coalition, Housing Coalition, they've been super helpful with everything.
I want to ask a question, what's the drawback of us establishing a forty R today? We potentially could, the state could give us money, which they could potentially ask for back, right? So if you've got the money aside, you set it in an account, then there's, is there any other risk to the town?
Well firstly, you're not going to set the money aside, it's going to get spent. Guarantee that, that's going to happen, especially, that's the reality.
I would have coals and covered funds, and I wouldn't set this.
Do you want to talk about the establishment costs of putting the forty R in place? You've mentioned several steps of approval.
It's not costly, if you got the.
Study.
Town consultant services to do it.
We've used, we use PVPC, Larry Smith, I'm sure Larry did the one for you, because Larry's really good at it. And that, obviously that didn't cost the town anything, other than the fact that we also used them for some other work that we paid for ourselves, but the big thing is time, and there's a political capital. Because people say twenty units per acre minimum, you're trying to create a Chicago downtown here. I'm serious.
That's kind of the meaning of apartments, it's eight units and stuff, if it's a house.
No, eight units minimum, eight units per acre for a single family.
I want to do the number twenty.
But you have to allow those.
Yeah.
And twelve units per acre for two, two family and three family, and twenty for one to family.
But it's true that in the town survey, people have indicated great support for like conscious development in air, in concentrated areas and then leaving open space, so we sort of played into that element. But honestly, it sounds to me like there's not a lot of drawbacks, it's just a matter of will we get shut down by the state? And to me, I think the most useful next step would be, Richard, if you'd be willing to use your connections to have that conversation and just find out, like, and I can send you the study that was done twelve years ago, obviously things are slightly different now.
I've got, I've got the information.
You got it. Okay, great, so.
But if we can also line up the other stuff, like we want to get the funding from the state for, we want to find a partner, right, to anchor this project? We want to find state funding for the sewer system, we want to top the PVPC.
What we did was, we took three hundred fifty thousand orders.
Yep.
And guess what we used to pay for the Mass Works engineering design?
Yeah.
It's not cheap.
No, I mean, we, we had a high festival on the hill and they did the preliminary design to allow us to get the Mass Works and then we contracted them, because we didn't charge Mass Works any engineering costs.
Yeah, so if we can bootstrap this project.
Don't you say we, is that you're planning or pooling of your town?
It, I was planning director and it was me, the town administrator and planning board, largely me and the town administrator.
The other consideration is, if you designate an area, you can create a TIF, a development.
Incentive.
Yes, financing or a TIF, depending, if, depending on the type of development you might have as part of your mixed development, that might incentivize the developer to get a tax break over a period of twenty whatever years to help them proceed, and those funds could in essence be used for infrastructure improvements to facilitate that. But that's a town municipality action that would have to be voted upon and approved by the state, by.
Is that easier to get through than a forty R district?
Well, you encourage.
I think we have one.
We have done this before, we gave them to Janie.
We have a TIF. So those guys had a TIF or a TIF?
TIF.
A TIF, but a TIF is different from a DIF.
Yes.
TIF is for job creation. A TIF basically is to incentivize a developer that they are creating jobs and they get some tax benefits from the state, what have you.
Multiple developers, so it could be an area.
A DIF, on the other hand, is an infrastructure improvement focused district program. There's two different things. A lot, for instance, South Hadley, they use a TIF to get mohawked envelopes come in to old factory and it helps offset their operating cost, their investment cost. If you look in DIF for sewer, that's going to be different from what a TIF would be. The acronyms are very.
What I liked, what I liked about the previous study is that in focusing on the Red Rock shop area in particular, it gave, gave a scenario where you could go up another level on that, on that building and create, you know, housing above the retail area. And what I didn't realize until I went back and looked at it, I mean, the area encompassed almost, I think it went down to the Manhattan River there, didn't it, the 40R district?
Is that behind?
It's a pretty big area that it covered on both sides of the road. Now, there might be some wetlands issues in there in some, some regards, but it did encompass a pretty good area. But again, as I spoke to Stephen about recently, you know, the lot hedges on, on East Hampton being willing to, if they can accept and will they extend, you know, sewer out that way so you could, you could start entertaining something like that. And that's another reason it didn't go any farther than the district that they did because when we started looking at the midtown area, what we called midtown, which was Pizano's Cumberland Farms area, that was too far out because there was no infrastructure there. So PVPC said at the time, we're not even going to go there. You know, it'd be nice to, to do this if you had the infrastructure, we could do the whole thing in this study. But because there wasn't, they just stopped right there at the East Hampton line up to the Manhattan River.
Mr. Chair, my question was, are there other areas beyond the Red Rock Plaza that had been considered for a 40R? And Pizano's has been raised, as has the extension of the sewer. May I respond, elaborate and refresh the board and the public watching where we are in conversations and due diligence on that matter?
Please do.
Thank you, sir. Back in January, I told you, back in January, Mr. Chair, you sent me an email saying, what about the possibility of extending sewer down along Greenway?
Exactly. A possibility.
Is it a possibility?
Right.
Brilliant question. I took that question enthusiastically. And that same month, I had a conversation with my friend, the outgoing city planner in East Hampton, Jeff Bragg, and I said, how would East Hampton tee this up to move forward in a tangible way currently? Because I've heard intimations that it was possible. Jeff said, you need to speak to the Director of Public Works. I did. He said, yes, we do have capacity and for the rest of the details, and we would be interested. For the rest of the details, you need to talk to the Water and Sewer Superintendent and between Massachusetts School Vacation, Spring Vacation...
Of East Hampton?
I'm sorry.
Of East Hampton?
Of East Hampton, yes, sir. The Water and Sewer Superintendent, because we don't have sewer, was on vacation. And so that's the missed link.
I spoke with them a couple of years ago about that.
Great. A couple of years ago.
And there's capacity.
There is capacity in the plant and they recently worked on the specific...
It's not the plant, it's the...
Line.
It's the line that, it's the, it's the connection. So they have two lines, one that goes a route 10 and the other one they installed on the pathway that stops around Lemigo or whatever that road is.
Lemelco, what?
Lemelco.
Seventy some odd feet from the town line.
Correct. So that, that was done for future expansion potential. And that's the line that has capacity to be connected to Southampton.
Correct. And so Paul said recently, this is moot if we don't have a welcome from East Hampton. So East Hampton has capacity in their treatment plant. They have upgraded the interceptor line, but they have expected growth on that line. So depending on what Southampton would ask, one district in the Red Rocks area or potentially two districts, including the Village, so that would be a capital cost for us to extend public sewer, interceptor line, collector lines into Southampton. But it would directly support the kind of multi-juice, high bedrooms per acre that we're trying to incentivize.
So before you go any further, so my question was...
East Hampton is open arms, but the details to be worked out.
Right. But I'm, my question in my mind is, do they know how much capacity they can handle over and above what they are doing now? I mean, households or however they calculate it, do they know?
Yes. They're a regulated public utility, they know that.
So, so they can take an infinite amount of sewage?
No, of course.
No.
No. They have the answer to your question. The answer is not infinite, the answer is finite and we need to know what it is and how that projects out with their future growth and how far we would find it beneficial, if any.
How far you could go with, with it here.
Sir, what's the increment? Can they handle it? What would they charge us for operation maintenance and capital improvements?
And my guess is what the, if, I'd add one question, has anybody talked to the mayor of East Hampton if there is a political willingness to do it?
Yes.
That, that's critical. That's more, to me, that's more critical than the technical aspect.
It's the outgoing mayor and she is all in on it.
And what would happen is if they're agreeable to it, you'd have an municipal agreement that would have X amount of capacity, they would sell it to you, is what the amount to.
So they installed, I think it was an eight-inch sewer line that has virtually zero use in the bike path right now. So if they design an eight-inch line, it has a certain capacity. And if it is zero use, that means nothing's connected to it.
As long as they don't, and they're not setting aside a portion of that capacity for their other use, for projected use down there. So they may say, hey, that's fine, but when you pay for any upgrade to the line?
So as a heads up, what I would suggest the town needs to do is with the tie and bond project that's being designed, you would have to establish nonparticipating cost if you want to install a sewer line in that right-of-way of the rail or the...
Paul, just like me, you need to get closer to the microphone because even in the room, I can't hear you with my...
And I would also encourage that if you have the support of the outgoing mayor, you try to get an agreement before they leave office so that you have something formally in place so that you're not dealing with a new mayor that may not have...
Thank you for that encouragement. Things in Southampton do not move typically as fast as they do in East Hampton.
That's not uncommon.
So following up on my colleague's suggestion, Tie and Bond is doing the detailed engineering for the Greenway path. And that's the route that we've been wondering about because any utility corridor is impossible to replace in the current environment. So it is a rail-banked rail corridor and the town has purchase rights for recreational use. That's quite clear. The prohibition is that the town can't do anything inconsistent with returning the right-of-way back to a rail line in the future. You might forego the recreational use. Question comes, in a 100-foot right-of-way with a pathway that's 10 or 12 feet and the ballast embankment of 25 or 50 feet even, you have some leftover right-of-way where one might run the utility. Is it feasible? Tie and Bond has all the physical data. I asked them the question, what would a feasibility study's scope look like? Well, they were very kind and actually provided a quote since there are outside engineers. And for $30,000, and they elaborated that that may be subject to a rural development grant with zero town match, all state money potentially, although match helps elevate your proposal, that, that $30,000 proposal would answer the questions beyond, is East Hampton willing to entertain the question? Beyond that and the fact that there's a right-of-way and we know that it's good for trail, we don't know what we need to know.
One thing I would say is, how will the town secure the construction dollars for that?
Mass Works?
No. It's more likely the state revolving fund, which is getting massive infusion of federal funds. And in fact, I think because it's for dirty water and it runs through an environmentally sensitive area, there's every reason that we could get Clean Water Act, Clean and Dirty Water Grant money, which is, last I heard, 2% interest, forgivable principal. So the leverage that you can get off of the state revolving fund is massive. But you have, it's like Mass Works, you have to be partway along in feasibility and design.
On the SRF, you need like a 20% match, don't you? What's the match? That's, that's still the...
It's kind of funny money because it's forgivable. Whatever it is, that would be long-term bonding, yes. 20% on tens of millions of dollars is a lot of money. I don't know how many layers beyond SRF, state revolving fund for wastewater, you could layer. But if it is specifically designed to support affordable housing, as manifested by a 40R district, I think that is worth pursuing.
I think what we're all getting back to is we look at the original 40R study that was done.
Right.
The area which was proposed, which is right next to East Hampton, it's on the border of East Hampton. We look at where the transit routes go, they stop at the East Hampton line. There's also connections to the Big Y. If Southampton were to choose an area to have affordable housing...
Plan and board, yes.
We are getting back to what that 40R proposal or study had found. So we're reaffirming what, what they had put together many years ago.
So if the board's supportive, I'll be happy to make contacts with the state and see what their take is on options in terms of trying to create a 40R and also do some research on the transit routes, see if there's something there that might help us.
Yeah. In the, in the study, at least in the picture, there's, the transit route stops at the border or goes to Big Y.
Yeah, but that was 12 years ago.
True. Right. So just...
As I said, Larry and I had four, 40R districts in our minds for South Hadley. And the fourth one is going to be the Royal Gym. And two years, one year beforehand, PVTA shut down the route, so...
Time does change a lot.
So I'll have Richard, we'll copy you on his findings.
That'd be great. Thank you. I wasn't expecting you to be here with all this knowledge, so that was really good timing. Thank you.
More information from you or any other questions or anything else you wanted to press, present to us, Sierra?
I don't think so, Janet. I just wanted to move this forward. I mean, I really think it's a team's effort here, you know, it's not, I don't know that housing authorities typically get bucked in development or not from your perspective.
No. Not, well, not small-town housing authorities, no. South Hadley's doesn't.
But we have nothing else to do, so we're going to help you. We want, that's how important this is to us and we want to work closely.
I think the major restriction is that DHC, or what used to be DHC, it's formerly DHCD, they had a real restriction on what housing authorities could spend their resources on. And that was not including developing other housing that they weren't going to manage. It was, it's really bizarre.
Well, we don't have resources.
Were they meant in, is that director or board time either? It was just, it was ridiculous.
I have a question.
I feel joy channeling through me. The housing authority...
A warm and fuzzy area.
Pretty warm. I don't know. You want to open the window? The housing authority doesn't have a war chest. The Community Preservation Act has almost $500,000 in the dedicated fund for housing. It's just stuck there.
And we can be stuck if we had trustees for the housing trust and if we moved on.
That would only move it to another protected place for future consideration. Investing in land and partnership with a nonprofit developer moves it along very expeditiously.
And when you talk about the process for it, and this, one thing a lot of people realize as well, is not just the zoning designation, you also have to develop design standards.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You have to buy the dirt to...
And don't have to buy it, they can be privately owned, that's fine. In fact, best if it is privately owned, then it stays on tax laws. But the, the other thing to remember is that the 40R district zoning is all-inclusive. You can't have a 40R district zoning that references other bylaws, other provisions of the zoning bylaw. For instance, your zoning bylaw has a section on parking. It cannot reference that section on parking. The 40R district has to have its own parking requirements. It may be the same things, but it's got, the definitions have to be within the 40R zoning district provision.
Would that include wetlands regulations?
That is not a zoning regulation, that is a wetland regulation. That is a separate general bylaw. That, what you have to do is when you get your 40R district ready for approval, you have to provide them a copy of your stormwater regulations, bylaw, your wetlands bylaw, anything that would relate to it.
Water supply protection overlaying.
That, yeah, you have to provide all of that. And any changes to those regulations, before they may be applicable to the 40R district, had to be submitted to and approved by the state. Because again, 40R district is a self-contained zoning provision. And, yeah, so that's, their design makes sure the 40R district can function on its own.
So it's certainly time and energy, but if we're willing to help as soon as we can, we'll speak for ourselves. And Janet, maybe a little bit, of course.
Can you draw the maps?
I can draw the maps, but I can write a really good email. I have grant applications, so...
And if it, if it looks like it may be something that can go forward, then what the town could do is in your next DOTA request in December to PVPC, request assistance on 40R district from PVPC.
Right. That was my next question. Can they, can they resurrect that old study and just tweak it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. They should have all that information there, but it's, you got to go back and look at the data and see what has changed and why it would still apply.
Yeah. It was not, the person who did the study from PVPC is no longer there. It was not Larry, it was someone else.
Yeah, it was, I can't remember her name.
Her name's something.
Oh.
She left for Palmer.
It wasn't Ashley, yeah. Okay.
I can't remember.
But I think, you know, anyone, any planner who looks at the document can see where they need to update it. And that's how they did the Helling production plan, they just took our old ones and said, okay, where do we need to update this? So I think it'll be a quicker, faster job and maybe they can help us even more with the next steps if that's how much time they have, so.
That's false. Again, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, with your permission, one minute, three?
Go ahead.
Okay. Back to the issue of the Greenway and the potential sewer in there, I just wanted to, for the record, bring everybody back up to date on that detail of this. Because it was discussed first with Board of Health regarding failing septic systems and aspiration for, you know, doing better by the environment. Because there are some big multifamily systems that are being replaced currently. And there's some challenge, at least there was initially, for some of the new municipal buildings. Weren't sure that the soils were adequate for the commercial kitchen for the senior center. That's been resolved, but the question early on was, further on the sewer. And so the Greenways Committee has been consulted. And so, the Greenways Committee has been consulted. Town Administrator, I should say, our prior town administrator ran the question by the Attorney of the Day, Koppelman Page, and they recited the statute for rail banking. The question remains, given an attorney expert in railroad right-of-ways, whether this not inconsistent with argument would allow us to install or acquire the rights to install such a sewer. So, this was burning in my mind when I went to the Mass Association of Conservation Commission's meeting, and I sat in on a session permitting green infrastructure, and the presenter was from Pioneer Valley Planning Council, apparently our regular environmental planner down there, very senior and awarded person, and I think had worked in Palmer or Ludlow recently. At any rate, spoke to her about the Greenway and our conundrum about connecting down to Westfield for the recreational value, the question about the sewer, and our desire around 40R, but limitations of onsite septic. She was more than enthusiastic to hear the member of the Select Board and Planning Board who attended MACC to begin with, and wants to follow up. We know that there are habitat issues all along the Greenway, and so, working outside of the already disturbed area will have issues. And I, I know that the two Pauls particularly worry about the questions that aren't being answered, so I wanted to let you know that those questions are being teed up, and it's, it's not rocket science to answer the questions, but we got to keep answering questions. I am designated, by this Planning Board, the designated liaison to Pioneer Planning Council, and I keep up with their meetings, and with your approval, I'll continue this liaison with the environmental planner to suss out such things as, you know, what are the tripwires, but where are the incentives, and which is the chicken, which is the egg to getting this kind of long-term housing development in Southampton? And believe me, my agenda is to identify the questions and provide facts so that the public can debate these things. I think we've not had enough debate about the future of the town. Some things, you know, we just come crashing, we smash our nose into a wall, and I think if we were able to take a five- and 10-year perspective, the town would be well-served. So, with no presumption about the outcome, I'm committed to bringing information to the table.
All right, question for you then. Now, Ty and Bond is doing the study for the rail trail, correct?
The design.
Design.
The design, they're under contract for the final bit.
Now, if there is no legal judgment on whether you can even do it on the Greenway or the bike trail, from a legal standpoint, why would you encompass a study prior to getting a legal opinion on that?
That's an excellent question, Mr. Chair, and I would continue to try and address that before we even take up a zero-town match opportunity with Ty and Bond to do the feasibility, because the legal question is outside the scope of the Ty and Bond contract. So, again, with your encouragement, I will continue to pursue that with town administrator and appropriate counsel.
The feasibility study would allow them to understand what the potential cost would be to generate such a connection, and how far they could take it back with pump stations and other infrastructure to make it feasible, because there's a lot of hills that you would have to bring it down, let's say, towards the Cumberland Farms, right? So, you would have to build pump stations, you have to build other infrastructure to convey that wastewater into East Hampton, and that could be a very costly issue that could be brought up as well. So, they could also look at a map of the area and say, okay, these neighborhoods could be fed by gravity, that can be intersected by laterals that could connect from these streets, let's say Lynn Drive or somewhere, wherever can tie in, or Gunroll can tie in, and you can basically have a sewer map that connects different neighborhoods, and they could identify what that benefit would be for...
Even if they can't use the rail right-of-way?
No, it would have to be, they would assume they're using the rail right-of-way.
But then, that's Paul's point is, maybe you need to get a legal confirmation that in fact you can use the rail right-of-way for sewer.
So, because that study is costing, what, $30,000?
The proposal we have from Ty and Bond, independent of the Greenway design, RA moving forward, for the feasibility study for the sewer includes a map, just as Paul described. And so, I invite your review and your comments back, because we may or may not act on this soon, but the map is really critical. It does not, at present, include an area around Red Rocks. It does include the Cumberland-Paisano Village plus East Street, where there's going to be DOT reconstruction up to the municipal campus, because both East Street and these facilities might be better served, and we might have a better long-term outcome for the municipal campus if it was served by sewer. So presently, there are two districts that are being looked at to estimate the load that they would generate, so that we can be equally specific when we speak to East Hampton, and they say, well, at present, we have X capacity, but we project that in 10 years we'll have less by 50%, whatever, and therefore, we can accommodate 1, 2, 3 of your districts, none of your districts, it doesn't pencil out. These are the questions. Is the legal question fundamental? Yes. We have to find appropriate legal counsel. I've looked at statute, I've looked at technical guidance by the Rails to Trails Conservancy, and I've found precedent for a rail bank with sewer, where the trail manager granted sewer utility easement. It's old, it's not in Massachusetts, but there's enough for an appropriately trained and experienced attorney to follow our specific question. I've also consulted with the Board of the Rails Trails Conservancy and their local guru, only got encouragement.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sierra, anything else?
No, I think if there was question to address, then the housing authorities need to move.
You're the same way.
Thank you.
That's the quickest one I've ever heard.
You can't be hurt, you've got anything to add?
First time. We like what you bring us.
So, we'll get together soon, I guess, when we do some more research, huh?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving right along, building permits, that in a, we had a canceled meeting, and in between these meetings, building permits came in, all which were under the threshold And we had Anthony Wheeler, the one that we had just previously spoke about with the tree-cutting, 16 East Street. Sean Geiberson has two building permits on 7 and 5 Gil Farm Road subdivision, and then David Gartzka submitted one for 58 Pleasant Street. So, those, to make a record, do you need me to repeat those, Dan, or no, they're on your agenda?
Yeah, they're on the agenda.
On the agenda, okay. So, I would ask for an approval for those building permits.
I move that we ratify the Chair's action to approve in advance of this meeting, building permits for 16 East Street, Wheeler, 5 and 7 Gil Farm Way, Gilbertson, and 58 Pleasant Street, Gartzka.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Stephen, seconded by Paul. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go on to, Richard is here, a couple of things he sent, oh, I have a question. Is everybody getting your My Town Government notice about meetings?
I mean, he shows them my calendar, so.
I mean, are you getting email notification?
Yes.
Paul, are you?
I don't think so.
From My Town Government, because I was getting them until early February, and then they stopped. So, I called the town clerk, and it's since been rectified, but the question came back to me, check with the rest of your members to make sure they're getting the notification of Planning Board meetings, because the new outlook and the email server here has been, they're still working the bugs out of it. So, when mine stopped, I assumed maybe yours stopped as well.
I haven't seen one since November.
Okay, so, I'll write back to them tomorrow to make sure that they have all your emails, to make sure you're getting notifications of the meetings.
I am getting them.
You are?
I did, last one was March 14th, I received one.
Did you get, you getting them, Mark?
I did.
You did, okay, and Dan probably gets them anyway. All right, I'll, Paul, open that. So, anyway, Richard's here tonight, a couple of items, the E-code came back, I sent you the copy of the AG's letter on that, and finally, finally got that resolved with changes, which Richard will explain. And in the meantime, I spoke to the E-code representative that the town hired for this, and she said that, once we edit that and make our changes to forward it to them, it'll be a separate, I, no, it won't be. The changes will be included in the contract that was approved, so it won't cost us anymore for them to make the additions, deletions, whatever, from the Attorney General's office. But anything going forward that we amend from this time on will be a separate contract and a separate price for amendments going forward. So, Richard, you have the floor.
I typically, usually the town does have annual contract with maintenance contract with general code for the purpose of incorporating new bylaws, new amendments, what have you. So, I started initially looking at the Table of Use Regulations, because I think that's the easiest thing to look at, and also one of those critical items. And it was my understanding that the intent was that all special permits that were issued by the ZBA would now be issued by the Planning Board. However, looking through the draft, the table that Paul provided to me, there are several uses that are not, have not been changed. And the, Larry Smith had worked on the Table of Use Regulations when he was consultant, I made some edits, but apparently there is some confusion, and we lost out with the confusion. I didn't realize it. That what you have is, the ZBA is still the issuing authority for special permits for two-family dwellings in the RR and RN districts, multifamily dwellings in the RV and CV districts, elderly housing in RV, CV, and CH districts, permanent mobile homes or traitors in RV and CV districts, temporary traitors, mobile homes or traitors in the RR, RN, and RV districts, and cemeteries in the RR, RN, and RV districts. There's also, the Select Board is the special permit grant authority for one use as well, and I'm not sure if that was supposed to have been changed or not.
Got Selin?
It was facilities for the storage, transfer, treatment, incineration of solid waste. I'm not sure that was supposed to have been changed, Planning Board, or not, I never heard any discussion about that. So, my understanding, the deadline for warrant articles for May is tomorrow. My suggestion to Paul was, if in fact the intent was that ZBA was going to be taken out of special permit grant authority business, and there's going to be Planning Board in his place, that the Board might wish to submit a housekeeping warrant article to do exactly that at the, for the May Town meeting.
Is that more important than addressing the rest of them?
It would be easier to address that than the other. Site plan review, site plan approval, I got to do more work on the research within the text of the bylaw to be sure I pick up every place that major site, or site plan approval and site plan review is used, to make sure it's done what it should be done. Because I also would suggest that probably in the fall, you want, you might want to submit a bylaw amendment to deal away with the dichotomy of site plan review and site plan approval, and place it with site plan review with minor and major site plan. That, or you could use site plan approval, there's another community I'm working with, they changed theirs to site plan approval, because people had this idea, when it says site plan review, that they didn't have to get approval, they just had to get site plan review. So, they changed, they just said site plan approval is the process.
Right, so, so, Richard is recommending that, and he'll drop the language, but I'll make a motion here, but in effect, the warrant article would read, "To amend the zoning bylaw in Table 1 Use Regulations Regarding Designation of the Use Requiring Special Permit by ZBA, change it from ZBA to Planning Board."
I'll make that motion, that we forward that motion to the town administrator and moderator for the town warrant.
Because it was the intent all along, and I'm, that Planning Board was taking a lot of the...
I heard that from the first.
Load off of ZBA for some of this, to streamline the process, so.
Second.
Motion by Stephen, seconded by Paul. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I need to schedule a public hearing in April for this warrant, this amendment. As I said, I also looked at, started looking at site plan review, site plan approval, and I want to be sure that I cover all of the bases, but you've got a dichotomy that is confusing, in that it requires site plan review for some and site plan approval, and the only difference is minor and major, I think. Calling it minor site plan approval and major site plan approval is a clearer dichotomy, and it's one that I think more sense, when the attorney was here for the blue, the agro take, he said, he had confusion over that, and I said, yeah, it's confusing to me. So, I'll work on that, and hopefully we can get that for the May. I've also provided...
Important to get the placeholder in, even if you need to refine the language a little bit.
Yeah, for the Table Use Regulation, that's easy to do.
Yeah.
The site plan approval would take more. I also sent you information for future bylaw amendment, just some background information on battery energy storage systems. I hope you've had, you've all enjoyed clicking the links and reading, reading the information.
Just to give a little background to Paul on that, because he wasn't here, but the reason behind that being...
The state has a effort to substantially increase solar energy, and what we've learned, I've learned in another community, two other communities, is that there are companies that are... that are developing standalone battery energy storage systems that are not connected to a, directed to a specific solar operating, generating facility, and they're basically, they take the energy stored in and then goes out to the grid that way.
Peak management battery.
Because, yeah, because each solar generating facility has a battery energy storage system already there, but it's typically sized just to manage that solar facility. These are anywhere from three to 20 times those size of systems. The state, I understand, differentiates them...
With no generation.
Right, with no generation.
So the energy that flows into them, in fact, is not only solar.
Right. It's, and they have a, on some distribution level and the utility level. Utility level are basically substations, and distribution is smaller, and then you have another size below that. And what, the community, another community I'm working with, we're under the gun doing because we had a company come in, asked for zone determination, building commissioner of how they need to go about to get approval, and he said, it's not allowed because it's not stated in our zoning bylaw. And they proceeded to appeal to the ZBA on the grounds that, and actually, they do have an argument, that it's an industrial area, and the industrial area is provides for distribution, including utility distribution. And so they were arguing that, A, we can do it because it's distribution for utilities. But in the course of that, the building commissioner also said, he learned that the Attorney General has opined that standalone battery energy storage systems fall under the Chapter 48, Section 3 exemption of solar power.
So they could put it anywhere?
So they could put it, it's such, on a reasonable regulation. You can't prohibit it. So that community that I'm working with, they're under the gun because they got this company already there at the door, and they've been very generous. They said, we will defer our ZBA appeal to May to give the town time to develop a bylaw. And we've developed one with their input, and we'll see what happens at town meeting. If town meeting says no, then they will consider how they want to proceed. But given the Attorney General's position on it, municipal law unit's position, my suggestion would be that the town proceed to look at developing an amendment to your solar bylaw that would provide for battery energy storage systems. They're going in anyway. You've got them in, if you've got a house with the electric vehicle, the Jordan Station, you're going to have some type of battery energy system that goes in under the electrical code anyway. If you've got a solar generating facility, they have battery energy storage systems, and they could in fact enlarge theirs to accommodate more than what they need to serve the same purpose. So it'd be best to, I think, to develop something that helps regulate, helps provide some reasonable regulation for it. And I don't think it's something that we need to rush, try to get this spring, even fall would be nice if we can do it, but otherwise, next spring may be a target. It does have some pushback from people. There's a lot, there's concern about fire, and my understanding from the fire chief and this other community is, they've done their research in it, and they don't see a big fire issue. But what we did incorporate into that bylaw that this firm was very supportive of, and their attorney was supportive of, was a provision that any approved applicant, before they could turn on their facility, had to provide at least one day of training for all emergency response personnel on the response plan in this facility, and at the applicant's expense, not at the town's expense. And that whenever, if they change the technology, that results in them changing their response plan, additional training at the fire chief's request. So there are things you can get in there, put in there that are reasonable, that can address any, the concerns that people may have. That community will also require a security plan approved by the police chief before they apply, because you don't want the security details to be public information.
Is the local municipality able to question the public necessity?
No.
So I recognize that the proliferation of solar generation requires storage. The development of storage does not only accommodate solar generation. Except for the travesty of diverting the Connecticut River from Northfield to the top of the mountain and back down again, this doesn't generate, it only consumes power, and it is not specifically connected to solar in this instance. And so I think...
It serves the benefit of the utilities.
We need to get ahead of it, because it has the benefit of this exemption assumption, but I don't see that it benefits us in really promoting solar. We need to be defensively prepared to not have a four-acre set of tractor-trailer sized batteries replacing the Harley-Davidson facility.
And in fact, we're looking at the community as we're facing it upon the pad site, and so let's say, we're using 10,000 square foot for medium, and may have to have, for medium, and may have to have the four-acre site. So basically saying about 20, 25% as much. So a lot of open space last...
Coming to a neighborhood near you with exemptions provided by the state.
The big controlling factor is going to be the utilities, because if ever source, for instance, doesn't have a need for it, they're not going to agree to let them tie in, therefore, they're not going, it's not going to be developed. So utility is where it's really going to be controlling.
So we'll wait for the, I'll wait for your language on the warrant article, and I'll send it over to the town administrator.
I'll send it tonight to you.
Paul get all of his questions answered, because he missed a couple of rounds on this scintillating topic.
No, I have my own views already, so...
You have your views, you don't need information.
No, no, I...
Okay. But we've been a couple of rounds on this, and Richard's getting very excited, so I feel like we're going to move forward on this, and...
Well, the benefit is, I've had an opportunity to draft bylaw amendment for another community, and actually, probably easier drafted for Southampton than them, because that community had a dichotomy of small and large solar of 10 kilowatt hours. Anything over 10 was large. And, yeah.
They had actual solar generation of a significant size in town, right?
And 10 kilowatt hours...
One day we will.
Is almost nothing.
I see a significant price reduction in our bylaw, since he's already adopted one from another committee, and we're just going to be putting Southampton in the town.
Search and replace.
I've got to look at your solar bylaw and see how it incorporates into it.
Edit as needed.
There was a while back, when Larry Smith was working with us, when he was doing some bylaws, I was going, reading through them one day, and we were almost to the finalized stage. I had to, I had to call him and say, hey, you got to take out the different town here. I said, this is in Palmer or somewhere else. Come on, you got to...
Yeah, he did that on a project for us, too. Everybody does it once in a while. I mean, I, yeah, in this, what I did for this other community, I pulled from about four different other communities in some language, and the attorney for the developer said, you might want to move, take that word out and put this other community's name in. Okay, thank you, it's, it happens.
All right.
Chair, my sense is we should be adjourned. Would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I was just going to ask if anyone would like to entertain that. Motion by Mr. Johnson, we have a second.
Thank you.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good to see you.